We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Gordon, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father in heaven, we come to you in Jesus' most precious name. We know that you want our city to prosper.
Yes, Jesus.
We know you want our city to be blessed. So we come to you and ask that you help us make decisions that will be in your will and help bless this city of Lima. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Tevin?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mrs. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here.
Under the consent calendar. Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin? I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and items B, C, and D be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file and approve item A and to receive and file items B, C, and D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding seasonal pay rates.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Reineke Mazda Nissan for a 2016 Ford Fusion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number three be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation for disbursement funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number four be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Reineke Mazda Nissan for an SUV.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that communication number five be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to apply for Tiger discretionary funds.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with S and M E.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to advertise and enter into a contract for the regeneration of granular activated carbon contractor.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number eight be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight and authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Law Director regarding legislation to amend the City Code 1024.07.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number ten.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number ten be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. There are no petitions or reports of officials this evening, reports of committees. Council, the whole meeting was held April 13th at 6:30 PM. A written report has been submitted. I will move that that report be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
Motion, the second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 8015.
Amending the 2015 annual budget.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 80-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8015 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 8015 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8115.
Authorizing payment from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance 8115 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8115 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 8115 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8215.
Authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with Reineke Mazda Nissan for the purchase of a 2016 Ford Fusion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
I move that ordinance 8215 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8215 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 8315 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8315 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 8315 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8415.
Authorizing the Mayor to terminate an easement agreement established in ordinance number 12755.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 84-15 be placed on second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to place ordinance 8415 on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 8515.
Authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation District.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 85-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8515 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 8615 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8715.
Authorizing the Mayor to enter into an agreement with S and M E Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 8715 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8715 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 8715 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8715.
Authorizing the Mayor to enter into an agreement with Frost Brown Todd and Cole Shots, D.C.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that ordinance number 088-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8815 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 8815 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 8915.
Amending section 1024.07 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 89-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 8915 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 8915 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. We'll move on to miscellaneous business. Mr. Gordon?
The only thing I have tonight is to remind people to be good to each other, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items I wanted to remind. Our Northside Neighborhood Association meeting will be tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the St. Gerard's Cafeteria. This will be our first meeting in a couple of months, so everybody please come out. And also that we have citywide pride cleanup, and that dumpster site for our Northside Neighborhood Association will be at St. Gerard's School on May 2nd. That'll be the first weekend in May, and those hours are from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, so start gathering your things. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Yes, two things. I'd like to call an HR meeting from Monday the 27th at 6:00 PM. And the second thing is, he's probably gonna kill me because I didn't talk to him ahead of time, but, Mr. Caprella. I've gotten a lot of calls about the hump in the street by the civic center, and when was that gonna get taken care of? Is my car gonna fall in the middle of the street when I turn the corner? It's been, actually, you blame Mr. Howard Elstra. He told me to talk to you. So, I know.
Yeah, he's in here.
So I was just wondering if you could explain to the citizens what's going on with the ordeal and how soon it'd be taken care of.
Mr. President?
Caprella?
Thank you. Thank you, Jason Howard. The hump in the street that he's talking about is where we had, actually, a valve that actually blew its top, a 16-inch valve, last, you know, early winter, late December, mid-December, I don't know. I lose track, we had so many of them, so. But that raised up. Howard's taking a look at it. He's got a cost estimate, and I would hope within the next 30 days, I can't guarantee that, but work is underway to see what needs to be done. It's gonna have to be an excavation, you know, pull out, you know, when we fill that in, we just put stone back in there. We'll have to go in there and do compaction and repave, so that'll be done hopefully within the next month.
No way I should worry about.
Nah, you're not gonna sink in there unless you see water coming. You see water coming up out of there again?
Don't go.
Don't drive through there. But you shouldn't. It'll be repaired. I mean, the leak was repaired, it's just wintertime, you can't go in and fix those holes, especially one of that magnitude.
Thank you. I just wanted the citizens to hear from, that it's getting taken care of.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin?
Just the citywide pride cleanups. As Sam said, they're gonna start up in May. And on May the 2nd, at the Lacknipp Resource Center, 1440 West Spring, there will be, from 9:00 to 12:00, a dumpster, and that's sponsored by Boulevard Neighborhood Association. And then again, at the same location on May 16th, Lakewood West Neighborhood Association will be sponsoring an event with a dumpster. So it is a great opportunity to get the stuff that you don't want anymore and a way to dispose of it. Take advantage of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you. I'll piggyback on what Counselor Tevin said on the citywide pride cleanup. Unity Elementary School will be the site for Hope Neighborhood Association on May 16th. And if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Odom, this'll be on the website posted, and it'll be printed in the paper, all these locations, okay? And it will tell you what we will not accept, car batteries, any hazardous waste, but large furniture, things like that, and shrubbery will be taken to College Street, so make sure you read the restrictions. Again, Unity School for Hope Neighborhood on May 16th. Also, I'd like to announce the Ottawa River Cleanup will be this Saturday, April 25th, from 9:00 to noon. They meet at the Red Cross to get their assignments, and then they come back for their T-shirts and lunch. And I've been going there for the last five years, and they have a great turnout, and we always can use more, and hopefully the weather will be as nice as this past Saturday. I, too, would like to announce a Public Works Committee meeting for next Monday, the 27th, and I'm gonna move it to 5:00. Since Mr. Counselor Lowe made his at 6:00, design review discussion will continue. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes. First of all, say happy birthday to my lovely wife. Happy birthday. I know she watches at night. She thought I forgot all about.
You said it to her earlier today.
Yeah. No, I ain't get to see her this, I ain't see her this day to write. So she watch everything. So happy birthday, hon. We got a CBG meeting. We start on May the 4th at 5:30. May the 4th at 5:30. This will be on the website, all the dates we got. We're gonna run it all the way to the 27th, May the 7th, 22nd, June, but it'll all be in the newspaper, and we'll make sure she have it on the website. And we review the data, communication, resource, and planning process. So anyone wanna know about it, make sure they be there for that. Also, we have Walter Potts Golf Outing, and it's on, it'll be June the 19th, in Hawthorne Hill. I just was telling Ms. Adams about it. I can't golf, but we can sponsor a hole, and it's well needed. There's always, a lot of folks always get involved with this, you know, and so please take part into it, and just go in and out in the Bradford Center, give them a call, and let them know that you'd like to do a donation, or you'd like to sponsor a hole. Also, we happy about Hoover Park. We getting Hoover Park back going again. Neighborhood Association, and we got 16 members, so we're gonna try to get them back, jumpstart again, get them going again. Our dumpster site's gonna be Southside Neighborhood Association, we got 4th Street, Missionary Baptist Church, and that will be May the 16th. And we got another one with the Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association, they're gonna be doing theirs on May the 30th. On May the 30th, we have someone to donate some trucks. We'll have three trucks out there, and what I'm trying to do, get done, is make sure we get these alleys cleaned out a little bit. We got a couple alleys around the area there, we got a lot of stuff in the back of them, and some people yards back there, so we're gonna get some volunteers, and that's what we need the trucks for. And the Neighborhood Association said, make sure we get calls in all this week if you need some cleaning up back there, so we can have everybody design, so we can put the trucks in the area, and the volunteers in the area. But some of the areas, we need it real bad, and we're gonna try to cut down some of the bushes back there, that some of the alleys not got cut off, someone petitioned half of the alley, and the other half is not getting done. We're gonna try to take care of all that. And we got a couple houses that need some help, that we made some commitments to, that we will help them with their problem this time around, but we don't want that stuff to build up again. And I know some of them got, were sent to the housing people, and they, we have made a deal with them, and we'll clean it up for them on this date, on March the 30th. So if any calls, you can call Denise Cops, she the one handling all the calls about the alley cleanup. We're gonna need a lot of volunteers, so we hope, we will feed you and all that, and both sites will be feeding you. If you go 4th Street, we'll make sure everybody get fed, and, you know, so every church, anybody out there listening, just come together, and you can put it for a group act, you know, for kids in the church and stuff. Have them come out and do that. Also, we had an opportunity to take some kids down to Central State, and I want to thank the school, Lima Senior, the kids was really great, fantastic, and they did a good job, and appreciate all the shoparounds, and the bus drivers, and the superintendent for L.A., and all these kids to go. 50 kids went down, and it was great. And I hope we got some recruits from them kids, though, you know, the new rule now, we got recruits from the state of Ohio, and it's a win-win for when some kids, the first time they ever been to a college, we got some ninth graders, and I'm excited when kids are very happy, when they have opportunity to go on campus and learn something new about different things, about life, different. And one kid said he was not planning on going to college, now he see, keep your grades up, go to college, and it's a win-win situation for you. And I got one gentleman I want to thank so much, but he don't want me to give his name. He came out, and he asked me, any help I need, any help in the world I need, and we needed a garage painted, and he donated all the paint, and I appreciate him so much. And him and his wife, who all helped him with that. And it came out, him and his sons came out and painted the elder lady garage, and that's what we looking at, you know, being good neighbors, you know, everyone trying to be a good neighbor and help out. He's not even from Lima, you know, he's just overheard it. He overheard it, and we were talking about it, he said he was in Walmarts, and he overheard it. He gave me a call, and it was out there Saturday morning, and I thank them so much, and she's so happy for her, too. But these are some of the things we got to do, you know. Then there's a group right now trying to work on helping Ford out with handicap ramps. They come together. I know Ford is behind, I know they got a lot of people's calling them, this group trying to come out and help them, and say, hey, we'll help, but they gotta be veterans first, then they gonna go from there, but they willing to help out with handicap ramps, and I'm so happy for that, because, you know, people are trying to help, and that's why I like seeing that they coming out to help us out like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles?
Thank you. Couple things. I attended the presentation at the Rotary Club for the 2014 health assessment for Allen County, and I just want to kind of share some of the data that was presented to us. Some good news, the Lima, Allen County has had a population of overweight people that was 77%, and that number did go down to 67%, so we are making some great efforts in that area. But the things that I want to talk, I want to discuss, and let everyone be aware of is that our young people are really being involved in risky behavior. And today, nowadays, you know, everything is just so open, everything is just seems to be out there for our young people here, and I just want to just talk to those who are here and those who are listening, that we really need to take heed with our young people, their behaviors, because the sexual behavior's up, drug use is up, and the kids are getting really, really crafted with what they do. the kids are getting really, really crafted with what they do. I mean, a lot of things that they involved in as far as drug use is things that they can buy over the counter, you know, the cough medicines and those different things that they're using here. So I just want to kind of warn parents to be aware, to be attentive to what their children are doing. And, you know, a lot of people say, well, my kids are straight A students. That doesn't mean anything.
That's right.
You know, you're gonna be a straight A student and still be involved in a lot of risky behaviors.
That's right.
So the statistics still prove it, that they're going up, that risky behavior in our kids are, they're not realizing how dangerous it can be to try some of these things. And so I just want our parents, you know, don't just assume that kids know better, you know, have those uncomfortable conversations with your children, and talk to them about things, and just talk to them, you know. Nowadays, you know, your kids have everything they need in their rooms, you know. They can go to their rooms, and parents don't see their kids for hours on, at time here. So I'm just saying, you know, parents, there's a lot of stuff out there that kids are being involved in, and some kids will talk openly about it, and some kids don't, but don't assume that your kid doesn't say anything, that your kid is a, is a straight A student, that they are not being involved in the sexual behavior. The diseases are up, the STD, the gonorrhea, and all those different things, not gonorrhea, but sexual transmitted diseases are up. So, you know, these are things that we don't want to talk about, but our city, in order for our city to thrive, we have to have a healthy city. You know, our kids are gonna be our future, so we really need to make sure that they don't get involved in things that's gonna endanger their life going forward. And the last thing about that report, it mentioned that our young people, that the mental health of our young people is degrading. It says that youth who have seriously considered attempting suicide in this past year is increased from 13% to 18%. It was 13% in 2009, 2014 is 18%. Youth who had anticipated suicide in the past year actually attempted suicide in the past year, went from 5% in 2009 up to 8%. And for those who felt sad, or hopeless, or almost like there was nothing, nothing, there's no hope for them for more than two or more weeks in a row, that went from 27% to 29%. So we have all of these young people that are feeling hopeless, they're feeling like they have no reason to live, and again, it's a serious situation in our city. And again, I want everyone to be aware of it, you know. And boy, it says boys are more likely than girls to die from suicide, and we've seen that, you know. Most of the time when you hear about suicide, it's mostly the males. So again, parents, please, don't assume all is well with your child. Be attentive to what they do, their friends, the things that they say. A lot of kids are trying to get attention the wrong way. And so, again, you know, because I have a heart for young people, these are the things that I would like to put parents to be aware of, that our kids are going through some things that you may not even realize they're going through, and just to have those uncomfortable conversations with them to see where their head is. A lot of times, just by talking to them, you can kind of get a feel for what they're dealing with. A lot of kids just don't say anything at all. It's up to the parents, the caretakers in their lives, to get them to talk about this situation. Suicide is on an increase, and we don't want that to impact our future leaders in this community. We want them to grow up and be healthy, and be vibrant, and someday come up here and take our places up here on city council. So, again, parents, parents, just be aware. Lastly, I want to thank a lady named Mrs. Francis. I saw her this weekend. Mrs. Francis is a lady, she's an older lady that I met on a bus trip to